Praise for the pledge allegiance, Robert would you lead us?
Routine business to the pledge of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the February 25th, 2014 County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones, that the meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly, and that if you need listening devices, you can get them from Robert in the front row.
Routine business, item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, are there any additions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 18th, 2014.
I'll move the minutes.
Motion.
I wasn't here, I can't say.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last week's meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $540,382.
Pay the bills, I'll second the bills.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills, are there any questions or comments? A motion and a second to pay the bills in the amount of $540,382, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no reports today, item five is personnel action, A is a motion to approve the personnel actions.
Move to approve personnel action.
I have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
A second, good morning, Dever, how are you this morning? Do you have any questions or comments for Carrie? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second on routine action for personnel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to authorize the chairman to sign an addendum to the administrative services agreement between Minnehaha County and UMR Incorporated for Health Plan Administrative Services, Carrie Dever.
You recall, of course, that UMR is our third-party administrator behind our health plan, they're the ones who look through the billing and help employees with explanation of benefits. In 2011, we negotiated for a three-year contract with them for 4% administrative fee increase each year for the health fees and a 5% for the pharmacy administration fee. So this is just the final year of that contract, we get those rate renewals every fall in time to set the premiums, but the administrative agreement doesn't actually come through until the early part of the year, so this is just my routine action that I bring to you every year to ask for your approval to have that signed.
Are there any questions for Carrie on the administrative agreement?
I'll make a motion for Omar.
A motion and a second to approve the administrative service agreement with UMR, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie.
Item six is application for abatement, Kyle Helsa.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsa, Equalization Department. We bring before you this morning two requests for abatement, first being from Matthew Graham, record ID 77411, with 2,000 property taxes in the amount of $816.66. This is the difference between the owner occupied and the non-owner occupied.
Do I have any questions for Kyle on Matthew Graham, ID number 77411, property tax abatement? Commissioner Barth?
Kyle, so the bank bought it, so it was a non-owner occupied, but then we're giving some kind of a break on it?
The owner occupied status was granted by the Board of Equalization last year, but it had gone through bank repossession, sheriff's sale, it was not a clean sale, I guess is the way to put it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kyle?
Need a motion or?
Yeah, I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, voder, or excuse me, abatement ID number 77411 for property taxes in the amount of $816.66, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, and we have one more.
The second one is from a Keith Shetler, record ID 80812, property taxes in the amount of $1,434.99, we're recommending denial in that there was never anything on file to show that he had claimed the owner occupied status.
Any questions for Kyle on voter, or I mean on the ID number 80812?
Move to deny, second, I have a question.
I have a motion and a second to deny with a question, Commissioner.
Did you at least get the form for this next year?
Yes, we did.
Okay, good.
Okay, so physically we're denying because it wasn't filled out properly and filed, so...
There was no form filled out, so we don't lose any money by giving them the owner occupied. If we don't have one form, one time, that crystal ball they gave us just doesn't work much.
Right, yeah. Commissioner Kelly?
Was this a real, run through a real estate agent, or?
Through a contractor, built the house brand new.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kyle? I have a motion and a second to deny, the ID number 80812, in the amount of $1,434.99, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item number seven is notice and request, A is to authorize the county auditor to post notice of hearing to consider 2013 carryover supplements to various FY 2014 budgets.
Good morning, Darlene.
Good morning, Darlene Johnson, Auditor's Office. This morning, we're asking that you authorize the Auditor's Office to post notice of hearing to consider some carryover supplements and one other supplement. The carryovers are bills that were, or things that were contracted for before the end of December and not paid by the end of January, so there's numerous ones of those. Also, on grants, when we receive a grant, we supplement the entire amount and then carry over any balance at the end of the year. There was one other supplement that's included in this, and it was requested by Human Resources due to the contract that was entered into for the compensation study. The total amount of the contract, I believe, is about $60,000, she's carrying over the amount that she had left in her budget, plus we're taking into consideration what she has in her current year budget, and so she will need some additional dollars to cover that. So, the total general fund carryover amount, or supplement amount, is $239,713.7. Special revenue funds are $553,683.99.
Okay, any questions for Darlene? I need a motion to post notice of the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, second.
I have a motion and a second for, to authorize the county auditor to publish notice, or to post notice of the hearing to consider the 2013 carryover supplements, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B, under notices and requests, is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for pavement preservation project, chip sealing on highways 104, 110, 122, 130, 146, 150, 151, and 155 totaling 41.765 miles.
I do not see anyone here from highway, so this...
Shannon.
Shannon here?
He wouldn't.
I can't see him from where I am, so...
He was here.
I saw, I saw Shannon.
Let's just publish notice to bidders.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to publish notice of the bidders for the pavement preservation project, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item C is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for asphalt overlay project on county highways 109, 115, and 150.
I'll make a motion to publish that. Second.
A motion and a second for the authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for the asphalt overlay project, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
You know, it's at this point where we would normally have received any request to publish or put notice of a raffle in our county, and I know the Argus had a long article about the finances of one Senate candidate, and I know that she owns property in this county, or did own it, since I think it may be under duress, so to speak, there might be some issues with them, but I do not ever recall seeing a raffle announced on behalf of that person, and I guess it would be a violation, in my opinion, to have a raffle for any of these things without giving us notice.
Planning and zoning, we have no notices, I don't remember where you're at for sure. Petition of compromise of lane, there is none, this is a time for opportunity for public comment, is there anyone that would like to speak to the commission of something that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move on.
Regular business, item 10 is the second reading and public hearing to consider rezoning request 14-01, to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to I1 Light Industrial District in Track 2 Benson's addition, West Half, Southwest Quarter, Section 17, Township 103 North, Range 50 West, located on the south side of Lyons, Scott Anderson.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Department. Today is the official second hearing and final adoption of a rezoning request 14-01. The applicant is Rosenbauer South Dakota LLC, and the property is located on the south side of Lyons. The request is to rezone approximately 11 and 1/2 acres from A1 Agriculture District to I1 Light Industrial District, and this is the general location of the property, if you're familiar with Lyons. This has gone before the Planning Commission at their January meeting, on January 27th. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended to approve the rezoning request 14-01. I've included the minutes for your review of the Planning Commission, there was no one in the audience that spoke in favor or against this rezoning request. I have a general, here's a general picture of what it looks like, right now, it's a vacant field, it, I do not, to my knowledge, there is no immediate or imminent expansion plans, I think they are rezoning this in preparation for future development. Today, you can take action to approve, deny, or amend this rezoning request, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have, and as I indicated, the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Are there any questions for Scott regarding the second reading? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, is there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any proponents that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll turn it back to the commission.
Madam Chair, I know that the Rosenbauer operation is a great asset to our county, and I would make a motion to approve this, second.
I have a motion and a second to consider rezoning from A1 Agricultural to I1 Light Industrial, a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Just a comment, I agree, and Rosenbauer's been awful good for that community, and this is a good step, I think, they'll either expand or they'll get some other industry in there.
It's also a very clean operation, you drive by town, it's very, very clean, very well organized. I have a motion and a second to approve, are there any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 11 is a second reading and public hearing to consider rezoning request 14-02, to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the I1 Light Industrial District in the southwest quarter, northwest quarter, except H-2, Section 18 Township 102 North, Range 49 West, located approximately 1/4 mile south of the Crooks Runner exit, directly adjacent to I-29 northbound, Scott Anderson.
Once again, Scott Anderson from the Planning Department, this is a rezoning request 14-02 submitted by H5 Investments LLC, they are requesting to rezone approximately 32 acres from A1 Agriculture District to I1 Light Industrial District at the southeast quadrant of the Crooks exit off of Interstate 29. This is the general location of the property, and it shows the 31, or 32 acres to be rezoned. The Planning Commission had a hearing on this item at their January 27th meeting, and they gave it a unanimous recommendation for approval. Today is the second reading and final, potentially final adoption of this rezoning request, and this is similar to the last property we looked at, there are no imminent development plans, I think they're rezoning this with the, then, with the ability to market it and develop it as interest arises. I'd be glad to answer any questions, I can show you a couple pictures, basically, it's empty cornfield on the south side of that existing industrial development area, this is well suited because as you are, if you're familiar with this, you can see the property, I stopped at the edge of the interstate, you know, it does have interstate exposure, and it is at the, at an exit of a interstate, and a county highway, which we have identified in our comprehensive plan, is ideally suited for commercial development, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Scott? Seeing none, again, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to, is a proponent that would like to speak? Are there any opponents? I see no opponents or proponents, anything else from the commission?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve this rezoning representing the Planning Commission.
Motion.
I'll second.
And a second to approve the rezoning from A1 Agricultural District to I1 Light Industrial District, any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 12 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of 19 Glock Model 22 handguns, minus trade-in, from Jack's Uniforms of Sioux City, Iowa, Doug Lomker.
Good morning, Fisher, Doug Lomker with the Office of Emergency Management. If you recall, we recently came in front of the commission and requested that 19 of the older Glock sidearms at our police reserve unit be declared surplus for the purposes of trade-in. We received two bids, those were opened last Wednesday, one was from Neese Uniform, and the second was from Jack's Uniform in Sioux City. Both bids were examined and totaled, and of the two bids, Jack's Uniforms was slightly better, they offered us an average of about $288.15 per gun, or would say to the county about $440 for their bid, so our recommendation would be that we accept the bid from Jack's Uniform for the trade-in.
Any questions for Doug? Could entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of the 19 Glocks, trade, minus the trade-in, and it was a very close bid.
Very close.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign a memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and Volunteers of America Dakotas to provide detoxification services as part of the VOA's Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Services Grant Program, Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Minnehaha County Human Services. Today, Brian Riedel is with us today for Volunteers of America Dakotas, they are applying for a SAMSA grant, and this is a new grant for them, this is a grant for residential treatment for pregnant and postpartum women, and they are requesting a letter of support from Minnehaha County, as we are the organization in the county that provides detoxification services. I've read the RFP, we've had a chance to discuss through it, and it really looks and says, what are we currently doing, we will continue to do that and meet the needs in the community, and I know Brian is here, if you guys have any questions, before authorizing the signing of the MOU.
Are there any questions for Carol or Brian? Commissioner Peckus?
Carol, now, my understanding is that in the past, we've had some interesting challenges, I believe, with some of our pregnant citizenry that were essentially ordered to detox by some of our circuit judges, is this grant going to help us resolve some of the detox requirements, or at least some of the treatment that would be available?
Well, I think you may still find them, you'll still find them coming through, but we're excited about, because it provides more options for pregnant women to go, those type of things that are out there, so, yeah.
Right.
And I know there, it's, the grant looks at evidence-based programming and also ties in with our New Start and their Summit Heights programs.
I'm just really excited that you guys found this grant, it's wonderful.
Commissioner Kelly?
Carol, you may have said, is this inpatient treatment or outpatient? Will they have beds?
It's supportive services, is that perhaps a better way, Brian?
Is inpatient services really enhancing what we're covering?
Okay, so inpatient at New Start is where it would be.
Because right now, we, getting inpatient is very difficult for us, I believe.
Correct.
So this will target this particular population, good.
I wholeheartedly support it, we do have a motion and a second, Owen.
No, we do not.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and Volunteers of America, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those approved, same sign. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for human services caseworker, Carol Muller.
This is your annual contract that we receive, that we work with for Lincoln County, we have provided their services down there for human services for several years, for the welfare work that we do, and this is just the renewal contract that's out there, and I guess I would just open it up for any questions that are out there. Well, I'll be down in Lincoln County, I believe, in two weeks to present it down to there, the contract ends the end of March, beginning of April.
Commissioner Kelly?
Carol, is the huge reduction, is that due to the fact we got a caseworker down there, and, I mean, it says in here the number of caseworkers was 96 and...
Okay, that's clients.
Clients.
That's clients.
And then it dropped 33 and down 26.
Yes, where, the major change that's happening in there is currently, we have our caseworker going down there two days a week, but we will take applications for Lincoln County in our Sioux Falls office and in the Canton office, and what we find is, three years ago, we had 96 of those people were applying down in Lincoln County, then it dropped 33, then at 26, we're having more people come to Sioux Falls.
Okay.
To make applications, so I've talked to a couple of the commissioners that are there, and we've just said, how about if we do some switching around, since we're serving, seeing up here, it would help us out, and, and to be honest, it would get their clients' questions answered, so we will continue to have our caseworker go down there on Tuesday, which is the same day as WIC and InterLakes is down there, DSS, so we provide a continuum of services for the clients who may be seeking resources, but on Thursday, we won't be sending the caseworker down there, she'll be up here instead.
And the reason they come up here is because we're open and they're not?
Um, it's closer.
They're in Sioux Falls.
They're in Sioux Falls anyway.
Commissioner Peckus?
Well, I was just going to point out that it's wonderful to actually see some of these numbers and to see how you're approaching it, Carol, I sat with you at lunch yesterday, and we were having some discussions about some other things, but I do think that it's really interesting when you see the other organizations that are involved, like WICs, InterLakes, DSS, you know, when I think of it as being a spoke, I see Carol's Human Services Department right at the center of that thing, kind of coordinating it, and I'm so proud that your organization can facilitate and get some of those efficiencies that we wanted to get with both Lincoln County and Minnehaha County, and I really see it kind of bearing fruit with your statistics.
Well, thank you, well, the great community partnerships that are out there.
Right.
Any other questions or comments for Carol?
It's just good to see us working with Lincoln County and continuing this relationship with them, yeah, it's been a good partnership for us, so, we do not have a motion.
I'll make that motion too, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between Lincoln County and Minnehaha County for human services casework, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Hartford outlining reimbursement for chip seal work on Western Avenue, Shannon Schultz.
Madam Chairman, good morning, Commissioners, this item is related to step and seek, so we're requesting the commission to approve an agreement with the city of Hartford to cover their portion of a chip seal project that goes through Hartford, what we call Highway 151, and they call Western Avenue. Their portion is .764 miles of the total project length of 41.765 miles, because of our estimate of $1,070,007,000, their portion would come around, up to about $19,600.
Any questions for Shannon?
Go ahead, to see if we're cooperating on this, because it'd be kind of silly to stop and then start at the end of the street, we've had that problem with some of the townships, but this is a good move.
Any other questions?
I'll second them all.
We have a, we have a motion and a second.
I was gonna wait and see.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, I'd also say that this has already been signed by the city of Hartford, and part of the contract also is that the full payment is due from the city to the county within 30 days of invoicing, so.
Correct.
I have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 16 is a briefing on real estate valuation changes and increases in assessments, Kyle Helsa.
Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners, it's that time of year again, I guess to get the bad news out of the way, the Boards of Equalization, the local boards, will start March 17th. We warned them all that it's St. Patrick's Day, so, most of them moved it to Wednesday. At least they listened to us this year. The county Boards of Equalization will begin on Tuesday, April 8th. Normally, on that day, we do the exempts, discretionary, elderly, it's a lot of paperwork, you won't have any hearings. And on Wednesday, we'll do owner occupied on the 9th, on the 10th, 11th, normally, we do residential appeals, and on the 14th, we reserve that for commercial appeals. This is the optimistic calendar. We've had a, I guess I don't know how to explain it, fruitful, a very good year in construction, and that's really what I wanted to bring to the Commissioners, is what we're looking at, is in the year 2012 through 2013, total valuation of Minnehaha County in the very beginning was $12,184 million. Now, after our audit of two weeks ago, and the final certification of our values, we're at $12,753 million, for a total difference of $568-plus million increase over last Out of that increase, we took agricultural land up, $102 million, as mandated by codified law, took it up to an average value on the Minnehaha County soils of $2,095. Now, the good numbers, the year 2013, we added 1,145 new houses.
Which was that?
1,145 new houses to Minnehaha County.
What year was that?
2013.
Thank you.
After all was said and done, the things that we can use to calculate growth, it's always sometimes a fluid number, I think it's been referred to as, depends on what the state tells us what it is, new growth, we had $318,500,000, that's brand new. It's been a good year, we have taken, we have virtually touched every property in Minnehaha County in one way or another, whether it's agricultural, whether it was agricultural buildings, houses on acreages, all of the residential and commercial properties within the city of Sioux Falls have been adjusted up to market, and through the, I believe it was Deloitte Tush, Deloitte, whatever their name is, they've indicated to us that over the last 18 months, Sioux Falls has grown almost 12%. After the audit, we are currently with the non-agricultural properties at 94.1% of market, which then gives us a taxable factor of, I believe, .90. So everything that people will see in their notice evaluation, which they will receive this coming Friday or Saturday, if they would take that times .90 on non-egg and .85 on egg, that will be their taxable numbers. Little information overload, and Cindy's looking at me like, I sure hope you got a copy.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say, give me a copy, please.
It's been a good year, and I say that only because it's, there was almost $150 million in growth from commercials on top of the residential, so it's showing up everywhere. This is a good problem to have, how it all shakes out is going to be dependent on the boards, how much value is lost, tax incremental financing districts, discretionary formulas, elderly freezing, veterans' disabilities, we have a lot of things to get ready before the boards, so, with that, they're good numbers, they're very good numbers, it's probably the best I've ever seen in Minnehaha County as far as, we're almost up to $13 billion. Questions, please?
Any questions? Any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Kyle, this is the raw number.
These are the raw numbers.
And then, from this, we'll take the TIFs and the tax exempts out of, to get our taxable, or is, am I...
Well, the tax exempts are out already.
So, this is, this is a taxable properties?
Very close, yes, sir.
Does it include the TIFs, which I don't think are that much, are they?
It does include the TIF values, because by law, we have to notify the taxpayer of the full and true value of all properties.
And they do pay it too. They pay the taxes too, correct?
Yeah.
It's just where they go.
Exactly.
Any other questions for Kyle? Commissioner Barth?
Yes, sir.
Kyle, you know, you said that it went from twelve one eight four to twelve seven five three, so that's nearly, what, five hundred and eighty million dollars?
Five hundred and sixty-eight million.
Okay, so how come we only get credit for three hundred and eighteen million in growth?
We reappraised basically every property that was out there. The increase that took place on agricultural land is considered a reappraisal.
Non-growth.
It is not attributable to growth. This is, the growth numbers are actual new properties. That included, that included the eleven hundred and forty-five houses.
Right.
Commercial properties, so it's a game that the Department of Revenue plays with us every year, so.
Madam Chairman? So, Kyle, what was the growth in, say, nonprofits as far as churches, et cetera?
That I won't have for probably another two weeks, until, we're just, right now, recertifying and sending to the newspaper all of the nonprofits, the tax exempts for publication, and we have approximately fourteen properties to investigate, as to whether or not they will receive or will continue to receive exemption.
Madam Chairman? You know, there was just some talk recently in the legislature about taxing the hospitals. They are some of our biggest taxpayers, aren't they?
Yes, they are. Both of them are in the top five, in Minnehaw County.
Now, they receive partial discounts for their nonprofit
That's correct, yes.
But they are big taxpayers.
They are big taxpayers. Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Kyle, we recently, some of us went up to Pier to testify on Senate Bill one eleven, which would have given us three percent, or CPI, whatever is greater. They shot us down completely. And yet, you're saying, did I hear you say that the assessed valuation, if my house went from two hundred to two hundred and twenty, that's not included in our growth factor as far as taxable, or as far as our spending?
As far as your spending, it is not. It's considered reappraisal, and they do not take that into account. They only consider new growth as the ability to add that on to the CPI.
So, the assumption of that is that there's no additional cost as time goes on, even though the house has gone up in value twenty percent, or?
Yes, sir.
Is that a, is that a challengeable thing? I mean, is it a Department of Revenue decision?
I believe more so it's this incorporated within the state aid education formula, rather than through the Department of Revenue. Revenue is an interesting group, I know all too well. The state aid education, the department education is even more fun.
But, but they don't allow us to take inflation in?
No, no, sir. Inflation is considered reappraisal.
Has anybody ever challenged that?
I honestly don't know. I, I can find out, and I will.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Kirsten, do you have any comment on that, or?
I don't believe we have any standing to contest that, as you're talking about. As I understand, I think that has to go through the legislature and the executive branch, I believe.
I believe so.
We saw how well that works.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Kyle, that growth you're talking about gets split, and give me the, kind of the raw numbers. The school district's about, what, seventy percent?
Sixty-eight to seventy percent.
And the county's gonna be in the...
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, and the city will be...
The remainder...
Thirteen.
Yeah. And where that gets more interesting is you start
I thought it was about thirteen.
applying to different cities, yeah, it's...
But generally speaking, it's seven, seventy?
Seventeen, thirteen.
Seventeen and thirteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's been historical.
Any other questions for Kyle? Thank you for the update, and we would like a sheet with all the information.
Oh, yes, yes. I, in not knowing what questions there would be out there, I guess I've prepared a lot of answers and a lot of numbers, and I know how well you like my numbers, so.
These are great, though, I mean...
Yeah.
It does look good, yes, sir.
Kyle, you know, a couple of years ago, I remember Senator Dempster was looking at, you know, some tax exempt properties, and I think he did a summer study on the feasibility of looking at some of these exempts. And I guess one of the questions, and I think it was an issue that came up at that time, was that although one of our highest taxpayers, of course, is our medical providers, for example, Avera and Sanford, one of the issues that did come up at the time is that we don't take a really in-depth view of the, the property. We kind of take it at what they say it's worth, we don't do a top-to-bottom assessment. If we have to do, for example, what Commissioner Barth indicated, if we have to really look at trying to do a taxable valuation on some of that property that's out there, you'd have a lot of work to do, wouldn't you?
Well, that may have been when Commissioner Dempster was here.
Right.
But we have made a concerted effort over the years to appraise every building, every property within the county, including Augustana College, Sioux Falls College, Lutheran Social Services, School for the Deaf, and the hospitals. We have very detailed blueprints. The appraisals of both Sanford and Avera are almost eighteen inches thick. They include every physical drawing of every building. We even split always what is taxable on one side, what is not taxable on the other. It would be a big job, but it wouldn't be insurmountable.
Okay. Thanks for the answer.
Any other questions? This was just a briefing, so thank you, Kyle, for bringing us up to speed.
I have a question, Kyle, would work with you.
Yes.
Kyle, you prepared answers to a lot of other questions. What one didn't I ask? I'm sorry. Is there one that we should have asked?
The one that seemed to be, and I forgot to even mention, we provided instruction last week to all the small towns and townships on Wednesday night and Thursday night, and we had in excess of a hundred and fifty people attend, so.
Good.
They pretty much got this before you guys, but also the instruction part. Their biggest concern, and rightfully so, was since two thousand eleven, the first year that the assigned value came in for ag land.
Yep.
The average in Minnehaw County in two thousand eleven was fifteen hundred fifty-three dollars. For two thousand fourteen, it's two thousand ninety-five dollars. So, they've seen a continual growth every year in their value, and we have six hundred and twenty thousand acres of agricultural land in the county. That was their greatest concern, was when is this gonna stop? It's starting to get close to thirty-five percent of their income from that ag land is devoted to taxes, so that's tough for them to swallow. What other questions? Oh, boy.
Just giving you a shot there, thank you.
We also had some complaints from township boards that said they'd been getting complaints about school districts and the opt-outs, which we all know how that goes, so.
They were, they were an interesting bunch last week, and there was not a new face there, so they're having a tough time getting new board members. We've seen them all for how many years? It's, it's good to see that, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
But they can't find anyone else to serve, like any other volunteer organization. It'll be a fun year, really. It's not gonna be too bad, I don't believe. We've, wow, we've been through basically every property and booked them over. We are now physically inspecting, as soon as we get down to the Boards of Equalization, all of eastern Sioux Falls City. That's the last remaining part to be physically inspected.
East being Minnesota Avenue, or what?
Yeah, we try to take the Minnesota Avenue, but we end up with a lot of commercials involved in there, along the Minnesota, so we end up starting at about First or Second Avenue, gets into residential. And within that area, there's some eclectic neighborhoods, good and bad, so it's going to be a challenge.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, this was just a briefing, so we will move on.
Item seventeen is an update and status report of the eighty-ninth legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaw County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson in the commission office, and I'm going to start with, start at the back of the memo and work my way forward on this one, just because I think that we'd start with the one you're most interested in, Senate Bill one eleven, that was dealt with in Senate Appropriations last week. It was tabled on a vote of eight to one. That was not, there was, at that time, it was, there were no comments on it, and that was, of course, a couple of weeks after it had taken public testimony, where a number of you and Mr. McFarland were up and testified on the bill, and so that was put to rest with that, that tabling motion last week.
Robert, do you know who it was that, who that one was out of the nine? I didn't catch the name when I listened.
Jones.
It was Jones.
Jones, thank you. And I'm not familiar where they're, where they're from.
He's from down south, Turner County, I think.
It was, it was an eight to one vote.
Madam Chairman? You know, I, first of all, let me commend you and Dick and Ken for going up there to Pier. And I, you know, we had a couple others, the chairman and vice chair of our state association were there, but really, I didn't feel the love of our whole association present in that room when we were pushing for it. You know, at our state convention, they decided that an increase in the tax on alcohol was not doable, but this was, and that they didn't show up, and it didn't happen. We might as well have gone for an increase in the tax on alcohol. Going forward, I'm perfectly happy to come back with the same thing, but it still leaves property taxes as our only real source of income, and I think we need a little more diversity in order to take the pressure off of our property owners.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, the Blue Vedges were there, the governor's office was there, and revenue, or was it revenue? What was that guy from?
Revenue.
Yeah. And, and he basically said, we don't need this, the present system's working, and you've got the opt-out. And that was our attitude, and it's a tough one to overcome. But I think we all know the opt-out, it meant for emergencies, not for long-term planning.
Commissioner Pecos?
Well, this county is at the forefront of, I would consider, budget process and planning. And when I look at our other sister counties that are out there, Bennett County is a unique circumstance, where they're facing bankruptcy. They have some huge struggles. Do not kid yourself that there are other counties that are in dire financial straits, and they just haven't put pencil to paper yet to figure out where they're at. We are at a crossroads. We have gone through over a decade of property tax limitations, and this county has had the courage to opt-out, at least as long as I've been sitting here, five times, not only for special projects, but in the last couple of times, just for our operational costs. And it's amazing to me, when I look at our sister counties that are out there, some of them are in similar, if not more, dire financial straits than, of course, potentially Bennett County. And I believe that this is gonna be an issue that is going to crop up in the future over and over again. And eventually, the state and our partners up in Pier will have to take action. The only other option is to go and opt-out of the property tax limitation over and over and over again. But it's a safety valve, but it's a, it's an odd situation to force county government to meet the basic needs of the state, because we are, as Mike O'Connor said long ago, we're the service station for the state of South Dakota. Nobody drives to Pier to pay their taxes. They come down here to their county courthouses to basically facilitate and to pay their taxes, which wind up up in Pier. And ultimately, the counties will end up doing opt-outs to raise taxes to meet these operational needs, but essentially, we are the shills for the state, because if they don't raise taxes, we have been. And so, that's not fair, but I'm calling it the way I see it.
Commissioner Kelly?
The only other county represented there when we were there was Brown County.
Is there Brown?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's the only other one that spoke.
And he was a former senator, so I think he understood, not as a county commissioner, the issue, but nobody, there was no support. Pennington County does not have a problem, like, because of whatever they did back when the, when this whole thing started. But we have no votes, I believe, on the executive committee, is that right, Gerald?
We have one vote.
Well, we have one vote, and then there's a smaller committee that we have no votes on.
That's correct.
Every other county has one vote, two, or all the other members. I just, you know, if they're not gonna support us, if they're not gonna help us in the legislature, I think we gotta, I think we gotta take a long look at what we're doing with SDACC, and either ask them, you know, why is this discrepancy there? Why does Bennett County get the same vote as Minnehaw County when you go to the conventions? And I just, it was a little disappointing.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, as Dick said, you know, Pennington County has a budget ten million dollars more than ours every year. They got frozen in at a high level. Certainly, for us, if this bill had passed, we would have had slightly larger incremental increases. But what happens without that is that every five, five years, or whatever, then you have to do an explosive release of steam and jack people's property taxes up at a surprising level. You know, the state ekes by on seven percent increases a year, and they expect us to get by on one point four percent, even as they increase the burden on us. Our, our, our costs of criminal justice have increased, and public security have increased from thirty percent in nineteen ninety to fifty-five percent today. And I have an email here from our state's attorney, who says that he's opened one hundred more cases this year than at the same time last year. One hundred! That's gonna be eight hundred cases this year. Can we get by with a smaller jail? Can we get by with fewer defense attorneys, fewer prosecutors? Maybe we should just, you know, I mean, once they're convicted, drop them off at the pen, instead of left them lollygagging in our jail waiting for a pre-sentence investigation.
Any other comments?
Commissioners, the one, the one thing that I would point out on, on this bill is that although the, the end results were not successful, but I, I know your, your association and executive director, Mr. Bob Wilcox, was, was there daily, and I, and I do know that he was working this bill. Hard on, on his end, that, that was, their, their associate, their, their work was substantial on this bill. I can, I can assure you of that.
But my comments were not aimed at Bob Wilcox. The, the, it's, it's a general makeup of the SDACC that, that, Wilcox did do yeoman's work on this thing, but if he can't get any support out of his membership, boy, that's what we gotta look at.
I think that going forward, we need to continue to talk to our local legislators. We didn't even get very much support from our local people, and educate them. I think we can start by inviting them to our budget hearings. I have my doubts whether anyone will come, but I think we have to continue to work on them, and try to educate them on a one-on-one basis, because until they figure it out, they're gonna keep denying us, no matter what. This is an election year, a lot of those people are back up for their seats, some of those people are quitting. We'll have new legislators coming on, and those are other people that we need to be educating as they're campaigning, as to what's going on in their local government. And I think that's gonna be our job.
That's a great idea, Cindy. I think we should invite them to our budget hearings, and just a letter from you saying, we invite you to attend one of our budget hearings and see how this thing really works out. I'm sure none of them have been one.
Probably not.
We had some city council people here recently, though.
All right, Robert, I think we're ready to move on now. Thank you.
I do have a couple, have a couple other bills that I, I wanted to touch on, and these are more follow-ups to conversations we've had in the past weeks. One was House Bill twelve sixty-one, and that would have created a, a five-million-dollar grant program that the Transportation Committee would have, would have awarded grants from that pot to counties to replace, repair, and renovate county bridges. And that was, you had asked me a few questions about that last week, and I just wanted to update you that that was deferred to the forty-first day on a nine-nothing vote last week. Some of the major points out of that committee hearing, the Department of Revenue did testify against that bill, and one of the points they made was that that would make a, signify a significant shift in, in funding... a significant shift in funding transportation infrastructure in that it would direct general fund dollars into transportation where that had not, is not currently the case, and that was one of their major objections to it. And then I, I can tell you that some of the committee members in discussion of that bill also referenced the recent, I believe it was 2011, increase in license plate fees, and that, that, that was implemented on a staggered year-to-year, two-year process, and the feeling was that the, the full effects of that second year have not fully been felt, and they, and they felt like if they were going to do something additional, they needed to see the full results of that action play out. That, those were some of the comments that I would, would just bring back to you on that bill. 1223 was one that we've raised, that you've raised as a concern previously, because if passed, that would have enacted revised certain provisions relating to appeals to county boards of adjustments. And if there was an appeal of a board of adjustment action, that would, would essentially stop all permitting processes for a land use in a county, and that was, that was deferred to 41st day. That was a, maybe a little closer vote than, than we would have expected. That was defeated 8 to 4, but that one was sent to the 41st day. I mentioned one last week, House Bill 1096, that was hog-housed, and the result would extend the period for folks challenging.
Petition.
Petitions, yeah, for specifically for initiated measures and referendums to extend that challenge period from five days to 30 days. And that, that did pass the, pass the House, I believe it was late yesterday. So that one appears to at least have some movement and continue the process. We'll keep aware of that. That would, it simply is an interesting bill that is moving forward. And really, I, I didn't have a whole lot of others that, you know, a lot of the ones that we were watching from, from early on in the session have been, been settled, and a lot, a lot have already been, been put to bid, so to speak, for the session. So if you had any other specific questions, I'd try to answer them, but that was the, the end of the ones that I'd, I'd highlighted.
I'm wondering what happened to the bank franchise bill? It didn't ever get, it wasn't written, the last I knew. Did I miss it, or what happened to that?
I, I know that there are a couple of bills there that, that have been introduced, and internally, within our office, I, I think we were just following, following that process and not looking as, I believe the association was following those and, and working with the, the administration. I know Mr. McFarland attended a briefing on that earlier in the session, and the, the overall feeling on those bills was that it would appear for, for county, for a county perspective, to bring a little more stabilization to the amounts that we would, would receive, and maybe even bump those amounts a little bit, but the, I, I can't tell you the, the exact status of those.
So they might still be alive, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
I think Friday is crossover day, and at that point, it has to be out of the House of origin into the next House. So we'll know more, next Tuesday, we're gonna know pretty much where a lot of these things stand.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanna make a comment on a pet issue of mine, again, which is alcohol. We just had, recently, I suggested that action should be taken so that people with problems with alcohol be not allowed to purchase it. We just had two children, two kids, killed when a fellow who had a history of supplying young people with alcohol again went and purchased some. Why can he go and buy more alcohol? Why can someone with five DWIs go and buy more alcohol? People are dying, and I gotta say that I bear some responsibility for not taking more action on this. We need an income, but we also need to take steps to protect our, our fellow citizens from, from this incredible death toll that we have every year in the state.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Commissioner Barth. I guess we'll move on.
Yep. Item 18 is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports?
Yeah, unaccustomed as I am to public speaking. I've got a survey here from Interlake's Community Action, and as liaison, I didn't feel like I should answer the, the survey representing the whole county here, so I've made a copy for everyone, and I think maybe I'll submit all of our sheets to the, so if you could fill out what you consider to be the priority, we'll take it and have Robert send it in. Also on that thing we're having Thursday is the Heartland House fundraiser at that new hotel here in town.
The Hilton Garden Inn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for executive session with pending litigation.
Someone?
Second.
A motion and a second to dismiss to executive session. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Or opposed, same sign. Motion passed, unanimous, please. We're done.